I like my background, bro.
Yo, I love it.
So. I uh, I uh, so I was, you know, when we got on Zoom, you know, I saw some people with different backgrounds. And so I just started going through my pictures and this picture came up. And I said, let me put it up, but I haven't been able to get a haircut in a couple of weeks, you know? And I'm, and I'm like, you know, I'm sharp with it. I like my stuff real sharp. So I just, it's a reminder, man, that I'm gonna get back there, you know?
That's good.
I'll get back there.
I dig it, man, I dig it. We're here today with Councilman Rafael Salamanca, representative of the seventeenth district in the Bronx. How are you going about this pandemic?
It's, it's, it's very humbling, to be honest, and it's also very draining, you know? Um, just the amount of people that, you know, that I personally know that have gotten sick. Some individuals that, you know, made it fine. Some that, you know, went, you know, were very ill, had to go to the hospital. We didn't know if they were gonna make it. And then you have those that left us, you know, that, that didn't make it. And, you know, my dad being one of them who passed away a few weeks ago uh, from the, from the coronavirus. So, you know, um, it's, um, it's challenging, you know, to wake up every day and, you know, not knowing what the unknown is, just, you know, trying to, um, uh, you know, keep abreast of what's happening with, with the governor and the mayor and, and the feds and, you know, follow the rules and, and get all the information that you possibly can and try to feed this information to my community so that they're aware of, of what's happening. Um, so that's, that's really what my, my days have been, you know? Constantly on the phone with, with my team, you know? Making sure that we're on social media, um, calling different parts of my district, the TA presidents, uh, the community boards, the, the precinct councils, uh, because there's issues that are still happening out there and, you know, they need to be addressed. And if they don't get addressed, I just feel that those issues just get compounded on top of what's happening with the coronavirus and it just can make things worse, especially in my community, you know? Me representing a, a low-income black and Latino community.
So can you talk to me a little bit further of, of what your district looks like?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I represent a, I represent, you know, a black and Latino community, very low-income community, um, and we, there's a lot of health challenges. Uh, we call them health disparities, you know? Um, in, in my communities, you, you know, individuals have hypertension, high blood pressure, heart disease, um, asthma, um, and, you know, and other, and other diseases that we as black and Latinos suffer because of the, I would say, economic injustice that has happened, you know? Um, I, I was just talking to someone the other day about how difficult it is to be healthy, you know, in this community because it's just so expensive, you know? And so if you have a mom or you have a family who's on public assistance and their SNAP benefits only gives them about three, four hundred dollars for the month and they got two or three kids in the house or four kids and they're home all day, you know, you have to make that money, you have to, you know, last, so you have to spread it out. So how do you do that? You know, you have no choice but to purchase, um, unhealthy food so that it lasts longer throughout the month. And those are the challenges, uh, that my communities, uh, go through. And so what we've been doing is, um, you know, I know that, uh, we've been working with other elected officials such as Michael Blake. Um, you know, he's been working with restaurants. Uh, I, I believe it's called World's Kitchen where they've been out there and they've been feeding, um, they've been feeding, um, the nature developments or I guess the most people that are in need. Um, uh, this, uh, on Thursday, I've been in contact with the Huntsville markets. On Thursday, I am going to do a food distribution, um, um, with one of the markets in terms of giving out fresh produce to certain parts of my district. And then two weeks from now, we're gonna do a bigger scale where we're going to, um, feed about seven hundred people. Um, but we're also gonna go out and we're gonna give them face masks, um, you know, so that they can, um, they can, they can, they can stay safe.
So how are the people of, uh, your district and, and, and the communities that you represent? How, how do you, how do you feel they're, they're going about this, this challenge?
I mean, you know, it's, um, we're trying to do as much social distancing as possible. I mean, so, you know, we're constantly, actually, I'm constantly communicating with my constituents on the phone or, you know, or, or through social media. Um, you know, there, there's a fear, you know, in, 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 in my, in my community. There's a fear, number one, that you're gonna get sick. And if you get sick, will you get the right medical attention so that you can, um, you can get through this? You know, there's a fear because there's no real cure for this, you know? In essence, you get this, you're, you know, you're, you're, you're gonna have to, you know, they're gonna give you some meds. Um, but, you know, with the stories that you hear, it, it's a struggle for, 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 for a minimum of two weeks, you know, trying to survive this. Um, and then there's also a fear about, um, the economy. You know, people are getting laid off, people are getting furloughed. Um, yeah, the, the, there was a stimulus check that went out, but not everyone got it. Um, and, you know, to be honest, twelve hundred dollars, it's, it's awesome that you did it, but that's not enough, you know? That, that can help you pay not your entire month's rent, you know, maybe a portion of it. Um, and I know that the state is doing all they can in terms of unemployment. And I, and I'm hearing that on top of the unemployment, individuals are getting like a stimulus money every, every week. I believe it's six hundred dollars, um, on, or, or every month is an extra six hundred dollars that they're getting, which I think is, is, it's helpful. Or, or every week, I, I'm not too sure. But I know that the state is doing all, all that they can. But, you know, the uncertainty of when is this gonna end? You know, when this ends, how will the economy be? Will they have, you know, will, will they have their jobs? Um, and the good weather's coming, you know? You know, no one wants to be stuck at home and not everyone has the luxury of having a yard, a front yard, a backyard or open space, you know? And so people need to get out, people need to get air. And, and, and just that uncertainty of you don't know when you're gonna be able to do that is really, you know, i- i- it's, I would say it's devastating and it's heart, heart-wrenching.
Is there anything specific that you're seeing in your district that is impacting your district more than, you know, the neighboring district?
When I drive around, I just drove around my district today, you know? All the stores are closed, you know, I don't know if you know Southern Boulevard, you, you, you're from the neighborhood. Southern Boulevard, I grew up, the Southern Boulevard, man. It, it, it was always packed, the stores, the different options. And you drive through there and you just see all the gates down. Um, you know, there are some lines because the banks are open, there's some food establishments, uh, that are open. Um, you know, it's hard, man, it's, it's really hard to accept it. Uh, but being a, a community leader, um, you know, it's, it's my responsibility to, 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 to accept it and it really is my responsibility to figure out how can I bring positive to this to residents of my community? And how do I advise them or give them the information that they need so that they can survive? Whether it's healthcare, whether it's providing them with personal protective equipment such as masks, whether it's trying to get them, whether it's trying to get them, you know, food? Um, and, um, and, and information, because this is all about information, you know? I also, you know, I was talking to one of my friends, you know, this epidemic could have been much worse if we didn't have the technology that we have, you know? Because technology, you know, is information, you know? Um, and I'm, 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 I'm more than sure that, you know, being aware now that we have our cell phones, even seniors, my grandmother, you know, she, she knows what's happening. It really, i- i- it helps out getting that information and information's key.
So, um, you mentioned the small businesses. Um, what are the things that you're seeing and from small businesses in, in your community, in your district to, to help, I guess, combat this? Um, or even try to, you know, maintain some sort of morality?
Yeah, I've seen a lot of small businesses, you know, they, they try to keep their, their, their social media, you know, um, intact, updated, you know, whether they're Instagramming live, um, you know, trying to cheer people up or supporting one another. Um, I, you know, I know in the Mount Haven area, you know, they, they, they've been, um, you got Bronx Native, he's always on Instagram, you know? You have the, the Lip Bar, you know, she's always on social media, um, you know? But I know they're hurting, man, you know? Um, I know that they, they applied, I've been following it. They applied for these small business loans that the federal government put out and they didn't qualify. You know, and it was heart-wrenching when you see these multimillion-dollar companies who apply for these small business loans. And they got, you know, I get, what was it, Shake Shack guy like ten million dollars? Even though they said they're gonna give it back, I mean, you know, still, you know? Um, i- i- it's, it's disheartening for these small businesses that, you know, they put all their life savings in, you know, to start a business, something that they're very passionate about. Um, and then, you know, a pandemic hits and it's beyond their control, you know? The government is saying, we need, we need, you're not in a essential business, we need to shut down. And so what happens now, you know? And so we're working with, you know, I'm working with, I've been in constant conversations with, uh, with, um, Commissioner Bishop to ensure that he's, he's guiding these small businesses the right way, giving them the advice that they need, you know? Um, uh, giving them the information that they need on how to apply for certain grants uh, so that they can qualify. Uh, but also the city needs to do better because they, they too have grants or n- n- not even grants, it's loans, you know? And these businesses don't need loans, they need grants, you know, so that they can survive. And a lot of these loans that the city's providing, you know, they have these underlying rules that they need to follow. It just doesn't make sense for these small businesses to even apply. So I, we know that they're struggling. Um, we're working with the council as we're dealing with the budget. You know, I know something that Speaker Johnson is doing. I said, I, I'm part of the, uh, the budget negotiating team. And I know that what we're doing is that we're reshifting our priorities for this year's budget. Uh, we, we know that certain programs are not gonna work or certain programs are not going to, um, they're not gonna be open because of what's happening. We are reshifting funding to programs that we know for a fact, um, are gonna work and are needed. Um, and, um, you know, such as, you know, yes, yesterday, you know, the Bronx delegation was talking about, um, reshifting money, uh, and, 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 and partnering with, uh, uh, an organization such as like Fresh Direct or whatever, who's giving out, um, boxes of food for an entire week for a family. Um, I know it's something that, uh, Fresh Direct did with all five borough presidents last month and it worked out really well. And we wanna do it, you know, we, we, our individual council members wanna do it as well. But we understand that there's a cost factor to this, you know? And so how do we reshift our budget priorities to ensure that they are reflective of what's actually happening in the streets today, right now?
So how does the, the city council, um, operate in, in, in a time like this? How do you go about your business as, as, as a, as a body?
So, you know, um, the, the speaker, he, um, uh, he sat down with his team, well, I mean, you know, through video conferencing, sat down with his team and they're reshifting the way we're operating. So tomorrow, we're gonna have a stated meeting via Zoom, via technology. This is gonna be the first time that ever happens. We're gonna actually vote, I'm gonna be able to vote on things from my, from my home tomorrow, you know? Um, uh, we're gonna, we're, we're starting to open up shop in terms of having hearings. Um, the, all, all hearings are gonna be done through video conferencing, um, through Zoom. Um, you know, that's the approach that we're gonna go through. This, this just happened, this just hit us. And so we, it's obvious that no one was prepared for this. And so now, you know, we're, we're, I don't wanna say we're scrambling, but we are. We, we're, we're, we're getting ourselves in a position where we can function as a legislative body. Um, because, you know, business cannot stop. Um, you know, and, and, and again, you know, the power of the budget, you know? The budget is like one of the most powerful things that we, we do, which is passing the budget. Because the budget stimulates the economy, the budget adds dollars to programs that are very much needed in our communities. Um, the budget creates jobs, um, and it, it keeps businesses moving and it gives us the essentials that we need. And so, you know, we are working on the budget right now. We are doing this all through video conferencing. Um, and again, we are reshifting our, um, priorities to ensure that we are addressing issues that are happening right now on the ground. Now, on a district level, uh, for me, what I've been doing with my team is, um, you know, all my, I make, I show that all my team has technology at home. Uh, once a week, we do a, uh, video conferencing. Everyone in my team has responsibilities, you know? They have their own community boards and precinct councils, um, that they attend or the tenant association meeting. So they're in constant communication with these entities. Um, and they're submitting, they're providing me with a weekly report as to what's happening in their respective parts of their districts. Um, and me, myself, um, every, uh, every two weeks, I'm having these, uh, video conferences with, um, the district, the, the district managers from my community boards to just to be, you know, in tune to what's happening, what is needed and what part of the community. Um, you know, and it's difficult because we're trying to do this all while social distancing, you know? And, and then follow the rules because if I'm, you know, we're constantly out on the street, um, you know, people are gonna think that it's okay for them to do that as well. And, and, and the problem doesn't get, doesn't get addressed.
Are there any things that you're seeing or hearing, um, in your district? Um, or even in, um, neighboring districts that you feel like that are, that are, that are not being talked about? Um, more or not being understood more, um, in relations to everything else that's going on?
No, I mean, look, it's, it's clear that COVID is attacking communities of color more than it is, you know, other communities that are not of color, you know? Um, it's clear that, um, COVID is ravishing our senior nursing homes. You know, my dad was one of them, you know? I, I found out on a Wednesday morning that my dad tested positive for COVID. And that Wednesday night, I was told he's being transported to the hospital, you know? And I tried rushing over there to go see him. Um, and I, I, I would, I just couldn't get there in time. The ambulance had taken him already to Lincoln. And, um, and I couldn't see my dad, you know, I couldn't. Yeah, I couldn't see him. And, um, and, and, and it's because, you know, the hospital has rules, you know? You know, you, you, you can't have visitors. And so, you know, you have people who are passing away with strangers next to them. So it's tough, it's tough, you know? It's, 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 and that's just me, you know? And, and, um, you know, you have other families, you have other members. I know someone that works in government and she did everything she can, she could to protect her mother. She was seeing care of her mother at home and her mom, her mom, you know, got sick with, 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 with COVID. They took her to the hospital and she passed away. And so, you know, what's happening is our, our older families or those individuals that have underlying conditions, you know, um, if they're, they're not doing well, you know, they're, 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 they're in the hospital by themselves, you know? And so, I know I'm jumping around, but, you know, we need to, you know, what we're hearing, what we need to do better is that we need to really thank our healthcare workers for the work that they're doing, you know? They are straight up saving lives, they are the first responders to this epidemic right now. And they're the ones who are with our families on their side because we're not allowed to be there and, and understandably because of what's happening, you know? Business is not allowed. So I think, you know, going back to your question as to what's not really being spoken about in our communities right now, but we really are, you know, as I'm speaking to my constituents is what's happening in these nursing homes, you know? Um, you know, when I question how, how, how did my dad get COVID? Like, I don't understand, he was on, he was on the fourth floor. When I heard that, you know, this was happening, I was calling the nursing home. So you guys have any cases of COVID? They said, we do, they're on the second floor, we've contained them, you know? So I was like a little comfortable with the fact that they know what's happening and that they've isolated these individuals. Um, and, um, and then all of a sudden, you know, they tell me, you know, you know, your dad tested positive. So when I started asking questions and I started reading and I started, you know, calling around, you know, the state, um, they were, they're still, nursing homes are still accepting patients to come in, whether they're, they're, they're positive. So nursing homes are accepting new clients that are COVID-positive into their nursing homes. And to be quite frank, they can't isolate them. They're not, I don't think that they're doing, you know, they have the tools necessary to isolate them and contain that virus in a certain location. And as a result, our elderly are being most affected and, you know, and, and they're, and we're losing them. And so when you talk about what's really not being spoken about, that's really not being spoken about at the moment, the way I think, at the degree that it really should be, um, um, addressed or spoken about.
Yeah. How do you, how do you feel the relationship between the city government and, um, the state along with the, 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 the federal government? How do you feel like that relation, that relationship is, is, is working or i- if it's not working?
I mean, look, it's, they, everyone says, like, the fed, the, the president, the governor and the mayor, oh, let's, we gotta take politics out of this, you know? We gotta get this done, but everything is political, you know? They've done, you know, and so I think that our political leaders need to just like, you know, push some of the bickering to the side and really, you know, you know, get it together, but, you know, I, to be also, to be, to give them kudos, man, look, I think Governor Cuomo's doing a fabulous job in informing everyone, like, every day, you know, mu- you know, whether it's the weekend or the weekday, the governor's there telling us about, you know, giving us, you know, advising us as to what the direction that the state is going, um, advising us as to what we're lacking, um, advising us as to what he's expecting or what we're asking of the federal government. And, um, and also, you know, he's, he's governing, you know? He's putting out rules, you know, that are necessary, like the pause in New York State. He extended it to sometime, I believe, is May, uh, mid, mid-May. Um, so I think the governor's doing a good job. Um, I think the mayor as well, he's trying his very best, uh, here. I think we've also learned, I, I've learned the power of the governor, you know? Like, the mayor does have power, but, you know, when the mayor stated that he wanted to shut down schools, you know, the governor reminded him, listen, that's something that needs to go through the state, you know? Um, and, and so I think that, that can be challenging for the mayor. Um, but I, but I think, I think, you know, we, I think the mayor's trying his best to get information out there to us, advising us as to what's happening. Um, you know, I think some of the decisions that the mayor has made have been really good decisions in terms of shutting down the playgrounds, you know? And then it's unfortunate that members in the community don't wanna follow these rules. And so, you know, as a result, they ended up taking down the basketball rims from the basketball courts. I mean, you know, it's so unnecessary. I was, it's unnecessary, but it was unnecessary, you know? Because people are just not following the rules, you know? Um, you know, if we wanna get through this with COVID, we, you know, we wanna get back to our normal lives, we need to, we need to, you know, lower the curve and we need to follow the rules. We need to stay home, you know, allow the essential workers to go out so that, you know, we need to wash our hands, wear masks so that we can really, you know, um, get rid of this virus and we can get our lives back together. And, um, and I think government is, at least in the state and the city, is trying its very best to encourage people and continue to reiterate the importance of staying home.
You mentioned education.
Look, I, I, I can tell you that through this process, I have newfound respect for teachers, man. I have a five-year-old here, um, he's in kindergarten, so we're doing remote learning from home. And it is not easy, you know, it's not easy, it's not. And we have, you know, I, I, we have the technology, we have the tools here at home, it's my wife and I. She's changed her schedule around so that we can take turns, uh, with Aiden. And, um, it's, um, it's not easy, you know? And, and if it's not easy for me and my wife and we work, uh, I can imagine how difficult it could be for a single mom with more than two, two or three kids, you know? Um, and I'll tell you what the challenges are, you know? Um, first, you have to have the technology. Um, not, not all kids in my community, not all families in my communities had the resources such as a laptop or an iPad or internet at home, you know? Um, and so they depended on the school to give them these iPads so that they can, um, have remote learning. Um, something that I, that I found out in these, uh, conference calls with the Department of Education, and I'm trying to get a list, that not all, not all of my students, not all of my families have an iPad at home. And so they're just getting these things now, you know? It's been, what, al- almost a month now since schools have been closed. And, um, so I know that that has been challenging. Um, and, uh, and also, you know, going back to, you know, going back to poverty. Um, no, my five-year-old, you know, he's eating everything up in the household, you know? And we, we are constantly out there buying, you know, snacks and whatever to, to, to ensure that he has what he needs. But not all families can do that, man, you know? Not all families have the resources to go and buy snacks. Not all families can go to Costco's or BJ's, you know, and buy in bulk, you know? Um, and so, you know, they're going to the bodegas and they're buying, you know, they're not buying in bulk and they're spending more money. It's, i- it's a, it's a burden, it's a burden on these families. The financially is a burden and also education-wise is a burden because, you know, uh, I mean, you, you have to sit there with your, you know, if you have smaller kids, you have to sit there and you have to, number one, understand what the, um, you know, what the task is. Um, and not, you know, I have, I represent a low-income community and unfortunately, um, my community, you know, the, the education level is, is, is slow. And so, you know, you're, you're putting that burden on, 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 on families who do not have a higher education. Um, and now they have to really focus, um, education-wise so that their child can get the, the best learning experience possible at home. And that's not easy. And, and they, and then, you know, and then you, you know, you talk about their attention span, it's, it's extremely challenging. Um, um, these, these are extremely challenging times when it comes to education as well. Right now, what the city needs to do is the city needs to ensure that every student that's in, in the city public school, uh, has, um, has the tools that they need at home. They have the technology and that they have the, the withband, right? The, the, the internet access. And the city needs to ensure that every individual student has this. So if you have three kids at home, there should be three computers at home or three iPads at home, one for every kid so that they can learn, um, you know, so that they can learn appropriately. Um, you know, I also represent, uh, a, a community where I have a lot of homeless shelters, family homeless shelters in my, in my district, you know? And, and, and they're very, those, that's, that's a very vulnerable population. Um, you know, and, uh, and, um, you know, it's not a, they're not very stable, right? Because you're in a shelter, so you're, you don't know, you know, next week, am I still gonna be in this apartment? Are they gonna move me around? But these shelters, they have providers, you know, um, non-for-profits who are running these shelters. Uh, the, the city needs to figure out how they can allocate funding to these non-for-profits so that they can hire individuals that can maybe do, I don't know. I don't wanna say house calls because I don't wanna break the rules on social distancing. But there needs to be, I think that these, these kids, uh, the, the kids that are in the homeless shelters or that are struggling in school, they need more attention, um, in terms of education-wise, um, via Zoom or whatever. And I think that that's challenging and the city needs to do better there.
The rent freezes. What are your thoughts on it? And are there any, are there any things about, a- a- about a proposal of legislation should the, the people understand more about?
I represent a, a community where families are living check by check, you know? And, um, I, I, and, and it's, and it's, and this is difficult. Now, you, you, you compound that with losing your job, you compound that with being furloughed, you know, you're not really getting that full check that you would normally get, you know, your, your regular pay, you're getting a percentage of it, um, and it's, and it's challenging. Um, I support the rent freeze where, you know, they, they're not, you know, if your lease is up, you know, that they're, they're not going to increase your rent. Um, I, I, I also, I, you know, it's, it's a, to me, it's challenging because you have buildings that, you know, you expect maintenance from them, you expect, you know, the garbage to be picked up, you expect your building to be clean, uh, you expect, um, you know, the, the connet, electricity in, in the common areas, you know? And, and these are all things that we expect, but there's a cost with that, right? Who, who throws out your garbage? Who, who cleans your hallways? You may, you know, the porter, the super or a maintenance worker? Well, who, how do they get paid? They get paid through the, the rent that you pay to maintain that building, you know? Um, and I also, you know, I represent, uh, buildings that are, are, are subsidized by the city. So i- it's not, they're, they're not market rate. So i- it's not, they're, they're not market-rate apartments, you know, and so there's a very tight budget. Um, in terms of the maintenance of this building. And so, um, you know, I think that the city needs to, uh, number one, there, there needs to be a rent freeze, I, I agree with that. Uh, number two, um, for those families that have lost their jobs and they're having a difficult time, you know, paying their rent. Um, the city, the city needs to create a program. Something needs to be created where they can help these families and these families won't lose their apartments and they won't be at risk of losing their apartments. Um, but to be quite frank, and then you also have, you know, I, you know, you, you also have individuals who are misinformed. And are, and are hearing, oh, you know, there's gonna be a rent freeze, they don't rea- you know, they don't really know what a rent freeze actually means. And they're just, they've decided not to pay their rent, you know, and, um, the reality is, is that if, you know, if. If you have the means and you're still working, continue to pay your bills, man, you know, um, if you're not, if you're not. You know, I, um, you know, I am, um, I, 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 I'm part of that group of elected officials that is asking the city. As we're negotiating the budget, to see how we can set funding aside to help alleviate. Uh, these families that have lost their jobs and were not able to pay their rent, to see how we can, um, help cover that cost. Uh, until they get, you know, they get back to work, you know, um, and, and that's something that the city needs to do. Because right now, our homeless population is over sixty thousand individuals. And the city does not want to increase our homeless population and the only way to do that is by keeping people in their apartments. And so it's, um, it's, that is challenging. Um, and so we're just asking people to do the right thing, you can do it if you're still working, you know, pay it. If you cannot, and then the city should provide help on how to keep you in your apartment.
And you, you brought up, um, you brought up misinformation. In a time like this, you know, we, we're seeing a lot of it go around, um. I mean, what are your, what, what are your thoughts or about? What you hear that is, i- i- that is misinformation?
I mean, look, from the very beginning of Covid, there was a lot of things of people, you know, how, how do you know if you don't have it, you know, there was a lot of information, there was. People calling, you know, saying, oh, hold your breath for ten seconds and if you don't cough, you know, you're, you're, you're gonna be fine. You know, it's totally, that's totally not, that's totally misinformation, um. You know, and then again, the information about the rents, you know, uh, the rent freeze or, you know, now, you know, you don't have to pay. Uh, your rents, you know, that Diana senses, you know, look, if you're working. And you, you choose not to pay your rent, we get over this, I'm pretty sure the city's gonna come up with programs to help those families that were not working. Um, uh, secure funding so that we can cover their costs so that they can stay in their apartments. But you're gonna have to show documents, you're gonna have to show proof that you were not working, you know, and so you don't wanna get caught up. Um, you know, where you, there's, you cannot provide that proof and now you're stuck. You know, and now, now, you know, you may have to go to housing court or whatever, but, but that's what I mean by misinformation, you know. People, people think that because of what we're going through, that's it, you know, you, you just, you know, if you can do it, if you have the means. You should do it because, because the city's not gonna provide something without documentation. Um, and, and, and the other things about misinformation, you know, in terms of, uh, social distancing, uh, wearing masks. Uh, you know, when you cough, how, you know, how, how far it goes, in terms of washing your hands, how often do you have to wash your hands? Uh, once, you know, you've, you're using a hand sanitizer after the fifth time you use it, you have to wash your hands with soap and water. Um, you know, believe it or not, man, I, and I'm talking to a lot of people and they don't understand. Um, you know, I, I know people that have gone, you know, they have hand sanitizer, they haven't washed their hands an entire day. After the fifth time, you're gonna have germs on you, you know, you gotta go wash your hands with soap and water, very basic things can be misinformation. Um, and so that's why it's important that people stay informed, that's why it's important for us elected officials to be informed with up-to-date information. And it's important for us to disseminate that information to the community so that they understand what's actually happening.
So final question, um, is that, i- i- is there anything that you'd like to add, is there anything that you'd like to say? Um, that we haven't talked about?
No, 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 listen, just, um, we, we're gonna get through this, I'm confident we're gonna get through this, there's gonna be a lot of stories. Um, you know, of what actually is, uh, you know, there's gonna be a lot of stories of individuals that we've lost. You know, um, there's gonna be a lot of stories, there's gonna be a lot of lessons learned for us as New Yorkers and as, as, as human beings of. Things that we, we've learned throughout this process. One of them for me being something that I went through, which is with my dad at a nursing home, is how do you protect? Our seniors who we are, you know, tasking these nursing homes to take, you know, to take care of our, 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 our seniors because. Quite frankly, it's diff- if some, for some of us, you know, it could be challenging depending on their illness, you know, and they may need that. Twenty-four hour medical care. And so, at least for me, I know that once we get through this, I'm gonna be focusing on the senior homes in my district. And what, what these nursing homes are actually doing, um, why don't they have the proper equipment? You know, to, 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 to address these issues, why did it take so long for them to get this equipment, you know, you know. You know, I may even talk to, to the state elected officials in terms of, should a pandemic like this happen? How do you like close your doors, like, in my dad's senior home, when this happened and it got announced? They just stopped allowing visitors, right, and I said, that's the right thing to do. And I supported that, you know, right, cause you wanna e- eliminate the, 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 the interaction. But if you're gonna do that, then you're also gonna have to stop taking individuals who are tested positive for Covid and bringing them into your facility. You, you're, it, to me, just didn't make any sense, um, and, you know, so that's one aspect in terms of seniors. Terms of education, should we ever have to remote learn again? How do we ensure that, you know, kids on the South Bronx have the technology at their fingertips? So that there's no real interruption in terms of, of their education. I know for a fact that there are other communities in the city of New York that when this happened, these kids, there was no interruption in their education. They had the tools necessary so that they could learn, and so how do we address that? And then, you know, we have the issues with NITIA, you know, I have the third largest NITIA portfolio in the city of New York. I wrote countless letters to, to, to NITIA about cleanliness, you know, you. You li- imagine you're living in a nineteen-story building, right, and there's only two elevators, right, you're on the nineteenth floor. You're elder or you're doing grocery shopping, so that everyone is using that, that means of, 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 of transporting up and down. And then the elevator's broken because in all my NITIA development, there's always one, at least one elevator broken of the two in every building. So what happens, people are congregated in the common areas, right, waiting for that one elevator. That one elevator is not being disinfected, in a common areas, there's no hand sanitizers or anything like that. So in essence, our NITIA developments, they are set up to fail in these environments. And, you know, ni- NITIA is, you know, i- is crumbling as it is, now you're compounding that with health factors. It, it's, it's much more difficult for them to survive this than other people. And so that is something else that I'm learning, that I know that we need to combat and we need to address. And then food equality, that, you know, that, that is, that is key, you know, we, 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 we need to survive. You should see some of these supermarkets, how they price gouge you, you know, some of their, their, their produce, um, and it's, and it's wrong. Um, but also having access to healthy food has always been a challenge because many people in my community just can't afford it. And so, you know, for me, being a representative of Hunts Point, who has the world's largest food distribution markets. How do we work with them after this is over to really be consistent on ensuring that residents in my community? Can afford healthier foods and they have access to them. So these are all challenges that I am taking notes of and we need to, we need to address them ASAP.
Councilman Rafael Salamanca, thank you for your time, thank you for all your hard work.
All right, man, thank you very much, all right.
No problem.